Madam President, the time is 5:30.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. Welcome to the regular board meeting for Adelanto Elementary School District. The time, the day is Tuesday, January the 16th, 2024. The time is 5:30. Ms. LeVey, could you please take the vote? I mean, I'm sorry, could you please take roll call?
Trustee Benz?
Present.
Trustee Soto?
Soto, present.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, present.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, present.
And I'll take note that Trustee Turner is absent tonight.
Thank you. We have four and a quarter has been established. Section 1.04, Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all please stand and face the flag and place your right hand over your heart? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving along to section two, adoption of the agenda. 2.01, Ms. LeVey, do we have any proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business?
Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. Section 2.02, adoption of the agenda. Trustees, can I get a motion to adopt?
Benz, I mo- mo- motion to approve?
So do I, second time motion.
Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto?
So do I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion passed 4-0. Section three, Cabinet reports, Mr. Kraus.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board this evening, and the people that are in our audience. It's great to see a full house and those of you out on Zoom. First off, I want to say, Happy New Year to everybody. It's the 16th of January. It's crazy how fast this month has already flown by and that it's the year 2024. Before we know it, it'll be 25 and 26, and it just keeps going. So, but Happy New Year to everybody. Hopefully, everybody had a safe and prosperous holiday season and a new year, and we're moving right along, so we're excited about that. One of the things that happened over the break that was very exciting, that doesn't happen very often, and I don't have their names, but they, they, they were very excited. At, at our schools, from time to time, people meet each other as students, and sometimes love blossoms. And in this case, two former students at George apparently had a love connection, and carried on throughout their middle school years and high school years, and continued on after that. And so there was a teacher that's still there, that received an email from the form, from the gentleman, the former student, and he said, you know what, it would be great, since I met her in your classroom, can I propose to her in your classroom over the break? And I thought it was just the greatest thing to hear, that, you know, love is still alive out there, and, well, she said yes, so we were excited about that. So congratulations to that couple. Again, I don't know their names, but if you're listening out there, or you, somebody knows who they are. Great, great event that happened over the break at, at George in one of the classrooms, and I just thought that's really, really cool, that people are so creative these days and are still, you know, thinking of creative ways to propose to somebody that they want to spend their life with. So that was just wonderful to hear. You know, I know there's many other opportunities that people have taken advantage of over the years, but I thought that was really neat that in our classes, one of our classrooms, that happened. Let's see, the, I want to thank Westside Park. If you look in the back on our walls, we, each month, we have a school site that helps decorate our, our boardroom. And so on the back of our boardroom there, Westside Park came and decorated, and then next month for February is Black History Month. And so they had a lot of students create various things, and you can see the, the writings back on the wall, if you get a chance to look at them, if you're, when we're on a break or at the end of the board meeting. But I want to say thank you to Ms. Pantoja and her team, all the teachers and staff and students over there that did a great job creating these and helping us to remember the history for Black History Month next month, and so we're excited about them coming and decorating our walls here as well. This Friday, several of us will be going down to Anaheim. School Services of California is an organization that puts on workshops when the governor comes out with his budget, and many of you may have seen his budget on January 10th. The governor has proposed a budget for the next year, and of course, it trickles down to education. And so we will be going down to the workshop this Friday, several of us from the district. So hopefully, we'll get an update as to what the future may hold for the state budget. Just as a reminder, when we presented first interim, we talked about the budget was 68 billion in the hole in the state. And Governor Newsom believes that he's reduced that to about 38 billion. But there still are some changes to the educational budget, and so we'll be talking about those on January 30th. We'll have an update for everybody. When that happens on January 30th, we'll be giving you an update on the governor's proposed budget. So there'll be a PowerPoint presentation, so mark your calendars for January 30th, so that we can give you an update on what is being talked about and how it may affect our school budget as we move forward. And I also want to thank, I know Ms. Raiders in the audience and her team from ADTA, but I want to thank them. They were gracious enough to provide us with some Christmas presents over the break, and so I know the board members appreciate it as well as cabinet. So thank you for always thinking about us as well, Ms. Raider and your team. We appreciate the collaboration that we always have with ADTA, you know, as well as CSE, our, our fellow colleagues with CSE. But again, thank you with, to Ms. Raider and her team for those. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dwyson, who has some updates on some academic service events as well as some HR events. So, Dr. Dwyson.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Good evening, everyone. I will begin this evening with some highlights from our Human Resources Division. So our biannual secretary clerk meeting will be held on January 26. This meeting allows us to improve employee performance, increase morale, reduce turnover, and align our systems and procedures across our district. We conducted our biannual intern orientation and checked in with our teachers. This meeting allows the interns to receive information about obtaining their preliminary class, their preliminary credential, classroom management, and lesson planning. We have, we will be representing at the Job Fair in Apple Valley on January 25. And then HR continues to strive to meet 100% coverage daily for our students. So we want to thank to all of our substitutes who have been accepting our jobs. We've been close to 100% or near 100% almost daily, so we thank our HR team for that. Moving on to academic services, we do have History Day being held on Monday, January 22nd at Melva Davis. That's from 5:00 to 6:30. We have our district-wide spelling bee on Thursday, February 4th, sorry, February 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00. That will be held at Theodore Vic Elementary. This week, actually, last week, we began the iReady Assessment District Wide, and the window closes on January 25. So our iReady partners will be out to all sites on February 6th to give detailed training on reports, and additionally, we'll have ongoing support. I really want to thank our administrators, teachers, and central office staff for helping us roll this out as we begin learning this new platform together. So we held a winter Wonderland event with over 30 families in attendance, served over 80 students for the holidays. Every student walked away with clothes, books, toys, backpack with supplies and break bags. And they spent the day doing crafts, playing games. There was popcorn, cotton candy. So we just want to say thank you to all our volunteers and partners and those who were there to support that event. We had three schools hold their PK graduation ceremonies before the winter holidays. That was, those were held at Westside Park, Columbia, and Mesa Linda. We had well over 56 parents graduate, and some included both mothers and fathers attending the program together. We also have two parents who participated in our citizenship course, and our English classes have successfully become citizens, and now actually are employed for our district as classified employees. So we're really excited about that. And then we have a new collaboration with Partners Against Violence. They will be providing Art of Healing Workshop for anyone that's interested. Just a reminder, choice school applications are open, this is Jan-, as of January 3rd, and enrollment is open for the 24-25 school year for all new families. That concludes comments for HR and Academic Services.
Thank you, Dr. Dwyson. Madam President, that concludes Cabinet's comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to section four, staff, staff reports and presentations. Mr. Kraus?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board and the community with us this evening. We are very, very excited. I'd like to call up Carol and Rebecca and Dr. Dwyson to the front. We have certificates for our Science Fair winners, and so this will be an opportunity to recognize them. And also, at the end, do not leave, please. We'd like to get a picture, a group photo of everybody with a board. And so with that, we're all gonna go out here and start giving out some certificates, and if the board wants to come out and shake their hand as well, you're more than welcome.
Hello, everybody. Welcome. I'm so excited to see everybody here today. We are excited to honor our Science Fair winners. We have, we actually had a little over 100 and 110 projects this year, and so we are going to announce our winners, starting with fourth grade. In third place, Blas Hernandez Mercado. In second place, Aaron Navarro. And in first place, Aiden Garcia Renteria. Those were our fourth grade winners. Now we're moving on to fifth grade. These are for our engineering. So fifth grade engineering. Our third place winner was Dominic Arros. Second place, Molly Aguilera Guevara. And in first place, Kai Clay. For fifth place, for, sorry, fifth grade in science, Sofia Vasquez. Second place, Jacob Moreno. And in first place, Amber Moreno. For our sixth grade science, third place, Sofia Garcia. Second place, Ivan Felagreen, Ferragreeno, sorry, Hernandez. And first place, Lucy Lucero. Those were our sixth grade winners. Now on to seventh grade. Our third place winner, Carla Hernandez. Second place, Janelle Nicholas. And first place, Eduardo Rivera. For eighth grade engineering, our second place winner, Savannah McGee. And our first place winner, Aldo Liel Bernatos. And for eighth grade science, we have Anai Isla. Isla? For second, oh, I did it wrong. Oh, well. See, second place, Sierra Drighton. And our third place, which is a group project, Diego Rios, Alberto Casillas, and Riker Boucher. So congratulations again. Our first place and second place winners are going on to the county Science Fair, which will be held in March. Thank you very much. And we have Sierra Drighton. Yes.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Congratulations to all of our Science Fair winners that are here with us this evening. Those of you that weren't able to make it, we will make sure that you do get your certificates. But congratulations to everyone and to the families for supporting them as they move forward in their science fairs, projects. It's always great to see the things they come up with. It's, it's always exciting. And the next event we'll be doing will be History Day coming up, Dr. Dwyson, in the future. So we're excited to see what project students come up with for our History Day. So moving on to the next agenda, thank you, Madam President. At this time, we'd like to recognize a science teacher at Columbia Middle School. So the counties of Riverside and San Bernardino each year accept nominations for teachers to be nominated for Educator of the Year. And then there's a rigorous process that the districts have nothing to do with. It's all done by an independent panel. They review the nomination forms, and they make decisions based on who will make the finalists. So out of all the districts in San Bernardino and Riverside Counties, people are nominated, and then they whittle it down to 10 finalists out of both counties. Now, for the first time since I've been with the district, we were excited to have a teacher that made the top 10 finalists in the California League of Educators nomination process. So this evening, we'd like to call Ms. Haley Pelosi up to the podium. We're going to recognize her with a certificate of recognition for making it to the top 10 finalists for the Educator of the Year. They had their event back in December, but this is our first opportunity to recognize her at a board meeting. She is an outstanding science teacher at Columbia Middle School, and if everyone gets a chance to go out there and check out the innovative things that they're doing at Columbia, I want to thank Carrie Kozart for her leadership out there, and Alexia Galloway, the Assistant Principal as well, for the leadership of all the teachers and the academic programs at Columbia. One of the things that we were able to do, and I want to thank our M&amp;O staff, Mr. Richard, our supervisor of M&amp;O, is with us this evening. His team put together a greenhouse on Columbia's campus that Ms. Pelosi and her students will be using to come up with some innovative ways of growing various things out there, horticulture, and I'm excited about that. The board can tell you, I have about five plants in my office, and they all die. I, I can't keep them alive. I don't know what I do. I give them too much water, not enough water. But hopefully, our students will learn how to keep plants alive as part of the program out there. But again, it's just an exciting time to be able to recognize somebody from Adelanto, and this evening, we'd like to recognize Ms. Haley Pelosi. So we'll be going out here, and I believe that Ms. Risa Barrios is also with us this evening, has a certificate as well. And so, and Karen Diaz, so we have some other recognitions, and they'll be talking about their recognitions for her as well. All right, so first off, a certificate of recognition. This certificate is proudly presented to Ms. Haley Pelosi for being nominated 22, 23 Educator of the Year finalist for San Bernardino and Riverside County. So we want to congratulate her and present her with this plaque.
So I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Juan Carrillo of the 39th Assembly District. My name is Risa Barrios. Actually, you had my son in your first year at Columbia, so, and you left a mark on him. He really enjoyed having you as a teacher. So it is really thrilling to see you being recognized for your incredible work with our kids. So on the behalf of Assemblymember Juan Carrillo, we thank you and congratulate you.
Hi, guys. My name is Karen, and I am here on behalf of Senator Scott Wilk for the 21st District. We just wanted to give you huge congratulations. Thank you so much for your dedication to your students. It's people like you that are really making a difference in our kids, because this is our future generation. We can't wait to see what your process and what your journey will be like in a couple of years, but we're so excited for you to be a part of this 21st District. Thanks much, and congratulations.
Any board member would like to make a comment?
Madam President, I just want to congratulate the, the teacher for her dedication for her students. I hear amazing work, and I want to continue to congratulate you for your continued growth within our district.
Alrighty, I would like to take a brief moment and thank our Science Fair winners for being with us today. Thank our parents for being so supportive, and our site leaders for facilitating all of the Science Fairs. I do want to say that science was one of my favorite subjects growing up, and many of my teachers made impacts. That's why I think it's extremely important. In fact, multiple scientists went on to make amazing careers, and I think these are just a brief door opening into the careers that our students can explore. So I do want to say congratulations to all of those students who worked very hard on their science projects, and parents, thank you for being here with us tonight. Secondly, Ms. Pelosi, I had the pleasure of touring your classroom last year, and I'm kidding you not, I wanted to go back to science class. I am so glad to hear that you finally got your greenhouse over there. I look forward to coming by and seeing the amazing things you've got going on in there, and I hope to see your continued shining over there at CMS. So thank you so much for being part of our team.
I will concur with Ms. Webb, Webster, with trust, trustee Webb, Webster, because she always is so elegant when she speaks, except sci- science was not my favorite. I'm sorry, history was my thing. But I am great grateful for the kids who took the time and the extra work and the parent, parents, because without your, your su- support, our, our kids would, would struggle. You, you are so important, important to, to the kids. And I want to thank, thank you all for be- being here. And Ms. Pelosi, the fact that you teach mid, mid, middle school, you, you should get, get an award for that as well. But to teach sci- sci- science is an extra plus. So thank, thank you for your dead, dedication.
Okay, I concur with the rest of my board members. I am thankful to see the parents come and support their children. Thank you for taking the time out for your science projects. I know as a mom, those science projects between trying to get something to grow and take pictures and write on the board, and your, your child says, no, I don't want it like that. You say you want it like this, that the science projects can become a struggle. And at the end, it's like, okay, we made it. Something turned green, something actually grew. But to take the time out to participate and support, and then to come and support your child, I say thank you. Ms. Haley, when I came to visit your class last year, it was such an amazing pleasure to be there. The children were so engaged, and the little blue stuff on the, on the ceilings, you know, I was like, that's going to help me, you know, in my office, you know, help with lighting, and just how you were able to navigate, you know, students that were walking around, and you know, everybody wanted your attention, you know, it seems like, you know, just from small conversations to elaborate projects that you guys had that I couldn't begin to understand. But what was heartwarming was that there wasn't a student in the classroom that you did not recognize. I was like, she's taking the time out, and they're just like waiting their turn, waiting to get next to you, waiting to ask questions. And I appreciate you, we all appreciate you, and congratulations. Thank you.
All right, moving right along, Madam President. At this time, we have some very exciting information. I'd like to call Mr. Jesse Landry up with some very exciting information related to our community facilities districts. No, seriously, though, it's very important when we talk about our community facilities districts, because it shows a sign of growth in our area. It shows a sign that we are being responsible with the growth in our district, and how the funding that is generated by that growth is potentially going to be used. And so Mr. Landry has been with us for many years, talking about our CFDs, CFD 1 through 4. And this evening, before the board, he's going to talk to us about the creation, formation of CFD number five. And so with that, he has a short presentation that he will be presenting, and then if the board has any questions afterward, he's more than happy to answer them. And also, just for the board's information, later on at a new business, there are several items related to, and Jesse, if you could just briefly touch on those related to your presentation as well. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Landry.
Sure. Great. Thank you, Superintendent Kraus, and good evening, members of the board, district staff, and members of the public. My name's Jesse Landry. I'm with Key Analytics, and we're, we're a CFD consultant to that Adelanto School District. So today, I'm here to talk about CFD number one, one of the only undeveloped CFDs that the district has. And this is going to be very similar to what we did. If, if board members recall, CFD number four back in early 2021, we performed modifications. we performed modifications to that CFD to update it from the time that it was formed back in two thousand seven. Those updates allowed a builder to come in, develop that project. And then if you recall, late last year, we were able to issue bonds and the district was able to receive a little over four million dollars in funding for school facilities. So this process is actually very, very similar to that, to what we're going to be talking about. So right now, today, the school district has these four CFDs that are listed out here. CFD number one, two, three, and then two tax areas for CFD four. So five of those areas all levy taxes. Those are the five areas that levy taxes. And then bonds have been issued on almost all those except for CFD number three. That one is still developing. It's still got a hundred and forty-some odd units to develop. In addition to that, improvement area B and C, which we're going to be talking about today, have not developed at all. There's been no development. So this CFD was formed back in two thousand five and it was planned to be over these, all these areas that are highlighted here. This is just right next to West Creek and Gus Franklin and Melva Davis. They had, they issued bonds back in two thousand six, but then the great recession happened. They issued bonds only for improvement area A. Great recession happened. The development stalled out, took a long time, finally got developed in two thousand nineteen, twenty. It was finally pulled all the units for those six hundred and sixty-nine units in improvement area A. They were all built out finally. Improvement area B and C have been dormant since then. So they've, as you folks probably know, that's, it's all undeveloped, just raw land right now today. A firm called Walton Global Holdings came in and purchased the property back in two thousand fifteen. So they've been working on making these modifications and getting the project in a state where it could be developed again. This involves them going through and getting new entitlements for the property, getting approvals from the city of Victorville, things like that. One of the things that they needed to change was this existing CFD number one, improvement area B and C that are, the legislative body is the Adelanto Elementary School District. So they came in and they said, these taxes are too high. This is the primary reason why they've approached the school district. The taxes had escalated from two thousand seven until today. And the taxes, if they were to leave those taxes the same, they would be too hard to market and sell the homes. The effective tax rate's somewhere two and a half, two point seven five percent, which is just too, too high of a rate to be able to sell those homes effectively. So they came to the district and said, we'd like to lower down this tax rate. We also want to make some other modifications. They want to make smaller improvement areas for the project. Before you saw there's five hundred, six hundred units in an improvement area. And if we know development in the high desert, sometimes you don't see five or six hundred units get built within one cycle. So they wanted to split these up into smaller areas. They wanted to refresh the joint community facilities agreement with the Victor Valley Union High School District and then eliminate the JCFA that they had with the city and sanitation district. That's, so the old CFD number one improvement area B and C had these JCFAs, High School District, City and Sanitation District. They're taking away the city and sanitation district and they're going to pay those fees separately. And then they went to refresh the CFD with Adelanto. So for CFD four, if folks recall, we just did change proceedings. We kept the same CFD name. But in this case, because they're changing the improvement areas and they're changing these other things, our thought is to eliminate CFD number one improvement area B and C. And then over the top of those, create CFD number five. So this isn't really a new CFD. This is just changing all the parameters of these, of the old CFD that existed there for improvement area B and C. So the changes that we've talked about would be four distinct new improvement areas that would be created. So it's going to take those two improvement areas and divide those up into four, so they're smaller unit sizes. After the creation of the CFD, the minimum amount of funding to Adelanto will be nine point one million dollars. That's in today's dollar. If you were to collect statutory fees on this project, you'd get about six point two five million. So that's really the benefit for the district of having these types of community facilities districts is the additional funding that you're able to receive for facilities. In addition to making this modification is going to allow that property to develop. This, this landowner currently has a couple developers in due diligence that are looking to buy the property, a couple actual builders. And so by making this modification, it's going to open up the possibility for this to actually be developed and be a viable project. What that means for the district, the other positive would be additional kids coming from these, from the project and maybe attending West Creek or the other nearby schools to be able to boost ADA for the district. My current estimates right now, based on current market rates, and this is conservative, I'd say it's probably a little higher today. About ten point nine million dollars is what I would expect. So you have that minimum level set of nine point one and depending on where interest rates are at, I'd say in today's dollars, we'd probably get close, a little over ten million dollars in funding. Or I'm sorry, ten point nine million dollars. So the timeline for this project, and I'll apologize again, I know it's a lot of items. This is items fourteen point oh three through fourteen point oh seven on today's agenda. You're going to be taking several actions involved with that. So the first is approving a mitigation agreement. That's going to replace the old mitigation agreement that was on the property. You're going to approve a debt, a bonded indebtedness amount. I believe that's forty-six million. You'll see that's quite a bit higher than what I talked, the numbers I talked about before. That's because this is just an initial parameter. So we set a large parameter at first. And then as, when it's time to issue bonds for any one of the improvement areas, the board would have to approve that issuance again and we'd set a new parameter for that. So this parameter that we set today can never be changed again unless we go back through these proceedings. So I want to set it with a lot of cushion because if interest rates were very low, perhaps we could produce more money for the district. So I want to leave that door open without having to come back to the board and do change proceedings again. The other item on the agenda is the resolution of intention, which is just the first step in the process for creating this new CFD number five and then getting rid of CFD number one improvement area B and C. So with those actions, if the board approved those actions today, then we would come back to the board on February twenty-seventh. And then there's a whole nother host. This is why my apologies are coming through. There's a whole nother host of items that are going to be listed there, where we would be holding a public hearing, an election process. I see a smile over there. You may recall, we did this process back, I think it was January in twenty-two, we did that for CFD four. So it's going to be very similar to that. Once, if that process is approved by the board, then we would be going back and we would record special tax links for this new CFD number five. There's a special tax ordinance that would be read at one of the meetings and adopted. And then finally, we would go and remove CFD number one improvement area B and C from the property. That means us recording a cessation of the special tax links on the property. That's all I had there. I wanted to open it up for any questions from the board.
Any questions?
I don't have questions because, you know, I have a hard time grasping all this thing. But you made it clear, clearer that we're just fixing things up so that the school district does benefit. You know, it's things that have, have to be done. So.
Yeah, and this development was going to really not get off the ground unless we made some changes to. Just understandably, if you were going to purchase a property and the taxes were so high that they were almost nearly three percent effective tax rate, you probably wouldn't purchase that property. And that's the issue that the landowners having with being able to sell it to an actual builder.
Okay, thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have a comment, but I do want to say thank you so much for making the drive up here and being with us tonight. And I do hope you drive safe.
Thank you so much.
I have none.
Thank you.
And the last item, Madam President, members of the board and the community this evening, going to turn over to Dr. Dwyson to give a brief update on the Williams Settlement Annual Report. Dr. Dwyson?
Thank you so much. So this is one of several required reports. We do see them throughout the year. They would come from our San Bernardino County Office of Education. And basically they look at instructional materials, facilities, teacher credentialing or assignments and public reporting. They're inspected annually. So this report compares our district with other districts in the county and then breaks down our district schools. So I'm happy to report that we have no outstanding areas and any facility repairs were quickly remedied on site.
And that concludes our presentations this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. That's good to know.
Moving on to section five, closed session declarations will be taken items five point zero two through five point zero six into closed session. Section six, public testimony before closed session. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Protocols for speakers, any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items only must complete and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Public comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comment and although the Board of Trustees cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, the Board of Trustees listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input in each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentations depending on the topic and the number of person wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional persons speak only if they have something new to add. Mr. Kraus, do we have any speakers from ADTA?
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Janif Ray up to the podium this evening.
Thank you. I have something to pass out before I start.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Superintendent Kraus and Dr. Dwyson. I spent the better part of the last month thinking about what I would like to say to you. As you know, because the offer must have come from your direction, the district has offered us a status quo on salary increase or zero percent. This, while we are negotiating a past year that has already been fully funded with over eight percent COLA. That is not a one-time amount. That's ongoing funds that will support a pay increase for our teachers. I know you want to be fiscally conservative for the sake of the district's bottom line. And I know you have been frightened into thinking that unless deep cuts are made, we will be insolvent in three years and have to be taken over by the state. Nothing could be further from the truth. Let's look at some hard figures. I've given you a handout with some figures. These are hard facts, many from Mr. Kraus's own interim budget report and some from the governor's budget. The LCFF is up over fifteen million since two thousand twenty-one and the first interim report showed revenues up. There are budget categories that have been padded like books and supplies during a year when we are not adopting any new curriculum at an all-time high of twelve point three million dollars. To give you some perspective, in two thousand twenty-one, it was eleven point five million. In two thousand twenty-two, it was eight point six, a year that we adopted science. In two thousand twenty-three, it was nine point seven, we adopted history. And this year, it is up almost three million from last year. Please ask yourselves, why is that? That's a good question. Another category is services and other operating expenses. From eighteen million in two thousand twenty-one to twenty-eight million in two thousand twenty-three, that represents a thirty-three percent inflation rate. That's remarkable. And if those services do indeed cost more due to the country's inflation, it stands to reason that the teachers also are suffering from that degree of inflation. Ask yourselves why. The ending balance in two thousand twenty-one was thirty-three million. In two thousand twenty-two, it was almost doubled to sixty million. And while the two thousand twenty-three budget reflects that it was back down a bit to forty-eight point five million, today at the first interim, it is fifty-three point seven million, about twenty million more than just two years ago. The category for unrestricted funds is up two million from Mr. Kraus's anticipated budget, twenty-three, twenty-four. We do have some concerns. ADA is down at the first interim, which obviously is an ongoing issue. Attendance has been markedly lower since we came back from our COVID year. But our district is not in declining enrollment. We are gaining students all the time while districts down the hill are losing students. They're declining in enrollment. Any reduction in force is not necessary. In fact, we will be hiring more teachers. And if teachers are rift, it will likely cause us to lose them as they will seek employment elsewhere. Being jobless at this time is unthinkable and to cause our newest, least senior teachers that fear and stress is unconscionable. Our district's financial position is favorable. At first interim, all revenues, federal, state and local are up. District funds are up. Books and supplies are way up. That category should be cut down to what is actually necessary in the district. Service and operations are way up. I know these are important expenditures, but none are more important than the classroom teacher. Unrestricted funds are healthy enough for salary increases despite the state budget woes. I've been asking for years for you to allocate today's money for today's students. They're the ones generating the ADA. They deserve the use of the budget. The eight point two-two percent COLA increase is ongoing. So permanent encumbrances such as salaries will not eat away at the reserves to the point where we would be insolvent. I wonder whether the current salary proposal will even meet the state required sixty percent. The threshold of sixty percent of budget should be spent on salaries. So that's a question I have as to whether it would meet that threshold. Let's talk about the governor's budget. My first takeaway is that he is not cutting funding to education. Next year's COLA will be very small, but he has a rainy day fund which he will use to support education. He will protect school and education TK through fourteen by increasing funding to thirty-nine point five percent of the general budget. That's about a billion more than the legislature appropriated for twenty-three, twenty-four, reflecting expectations of improved revenues in the next fiscal year. The studios are back to work. That's a huge funding resource for our state. The stock market is on the upswing. There is every good reason to see a turnaround in our state deficit, one that will not be driven by cuts in education. Let me talk for a moment about our salary scale and its rank among our local districts. For teachers who've been with us for five years with a bachelor's degree plus forty-five extra units, we are ninth in line behind every other local district. The fifth year is when we lose a lot of teachers, either leaving the profession entirely or leaving to other districts that pay better. These teachers are investments and the two years of induction training, the support that's offered to them and all that, all that is a waste if the teachers leave us. At our current salaries, we are not keeping up with inflation. Our spending power is greatly diminished. You yourselves know how much more everything costs because you increased your conference and travel budgets fifty percent to accommodate inflation. So you're aware of the effect inflation is having on our family budgets. Our SST referrals are up because our students are not reading anywhere near close to grade level from second grade on up. That to me demonstrates a serious need. Forty teachers are enrolled in the letters program. That's learning essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. Forty teachers enrolled in that in an effort to learn better how to reach these non-readers. This is a very rigorous, time-consuming study and it's no small commitment. It's a two-year commitment. It's ongoing. It's, it's, I'm doing it. It's very, very hard. It's a very hard program. A lot of good information in it, but it's very difficult. It's a real commitment to, we show a commitment to our kids that we need to help them. ADCA also pays for teachers to attend conferences to hone their skills. And as teams, we collaborate constantly to identify ways we can help our students. Our students deserve the very best teachers and as our skilled and capable veterans begin to retire, we need to replenish our human resources with the best new teachers coming into the profession, which I have to add are fewer than ever before. People are not coming into the teaching profession and many are leaving within the first five years due to the stress involved with the job. Speaking of the stress, if a doctor had thirty-six patients in his office all at one time, all of whom had different needs and some of whom didn't want to be there and were causing trouble. And that doctor, without assistance, had to treat them all with professional excellence all day for ten months, then you have a comparable experience to what teachers go through. then you have a comparable experience to what teachers go through. And you would know the struggle we go through if you came through to visit our classes and not just the handpicked ones that the principals bring you through, but the more challenging ones as well. When you only come through once a year, I personally feel a lot of pressure to show that everything is working well. But when you come through several times, like it seems like you used to, you'd see all kinds of situations in my classroom. In order to attract and retain the best and brightest, we have to be competitive with salaries in our area. The students deserve this. Consider that in recent months, we've lost many new higher candidates to neighboring districts. Please don't hoard district monies out of fear of the future, which is brighter than the future you've been painted. Please spend today's dollars on today's students. They deserve it. Adelanto kids deserve the best and the best we can give them are teachers that have the emotional wherewithal to give their best at work without the stress of feeling disrespected and unappreciated, not to mention struggling to pay bills and feed their families. Telling us that you appreciate us only goes so far. Show us with your commitment to fair and competitive salaries. Again, the eight percent COLA for this year has been funded. It is already baked into our district's income. While last year's increases did a lot to bring us up in the ranking of, of the higher, of the greater high desert, all the way as far as Trona and the Baker Valley, we are still almost last in our local area. Our students deserve better. If student success and educational support and outcome are really your priorities, you will consider what I've shared with you. Again, I recognize your desire to be responsible with funds. Having eight point seven percent in reserves when three is required and six is comfortable is actually irresponsible. Especially when you consider the needs of our students and the fact that we are still not fully staffed at Westside Park, Columbia, Eagle Ranch, Mesa Linda. It is already January and we've not settled the contract for this school year. Until we settle the teacher's contract for the coming year or for the current year, we really should not be entertaining extending contracts for other categories, building, management, temporary teachers, et cetera. I know I need to wrap this speech up, but I can't sit down until I tell you how deeply it hurts me and all our teachers to have the offer of zero percent on the table this year when eight percent already has been fully funded. It shows a blatant disregard for the job that we do. To be thought of as greedy when we are just trying to house and feed our families is very insulting. You know us personally. You know many of us by name. I cannot believe that you would call us individually greedy, but collectively, it's easy to paint us with a broad brush. Please consider that we are individuals, hardworking and quite frankly frustrated. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Do we have anyone for C S C A?
I don't believe Ms. Lynn's in the audience, but Mr. Sinatra, would you look online to see if there's anybody raising their hand for C S C A this evening?
I do not see anybody, no.
Not at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in the audience are on Zoom?
I do not have any golden rods for closed session and no one on the online request form at this time.
At this time, we'd like to recognize the student that just came.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, for this opportunity. So we, Dr. Dwyzen was alerted that we do have one more science fair winner that came this evening. We'd like to recognize them because they, they were able to make the meeting this evening. So with that, Dr. Dwyzen, if you can call back up your team with a certificate and members of the board, if you'd like to come out, we'll get some pictures and shake their hand as well.
All right, we have our second place winner from Columbia, an eighth grade student, Savannah McGee.
Moving on to section seven recessed closed session, Mrs. Ms. Leve, would you please take the vote?
We need a motion and Ben, Ben, Ben's mo- motions to go to closed session.
Webster, I second.
I'll go ahead and I'll take the vote. Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La Fringe.
La Fringe, I. The time is six twenty-five. We're in closed session. Thank you.
It got a little harder now. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you. Reconvening the open session. The time is eight forty-four. Called to order. Roll call and quorum establishment. Ms. Leve, can you take the roll, please?
Trustee Benz, present.
Trustee Soto.
Soto here.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee La Fringe. La Fringe, present. Quorum has been established. Section nine, closed session report. I do have two things to report out. The board took action in closed session to accept the final settlement agreement for O A H case number two zero two three zero nine zero five nine six. It was moved by trustee Webster and second by trustee Benz. The vote, the vote was as followed. Webster, Ben, Soto, La Fringe, eyes. Second reportable action, the board took action in closed session to accept the final settlement agreement for O A H case number two zero two three zero nine zero one one four. It was moved by trustee Webster and second by trustee Benz. The vote was for the vote were as followed, Webster, La Fringe, Benz and Soto, eyes. Thank you. Moving right along to section ten. Mr. Kraus, do we have any um, speakers for A D T A?
Mr. Sinatra, do you see anyone online raising their hand?
Not at this time, no.
Not at this time, Madam President, for A D T A.
Thank you. Anyone for C S E A representative?
Mr. Sinatra, do we see anybody for C S C A in Zoom for C S C A?
Not at this time, no.
Not at this time, Madam President.
Any audience members in the audience are on Zoom?
We do not have any golden rods, Madam President, for in-person and we do not have anyone on the list for Zoom.
Thank you. Moving right, bless you. Bless you. Moving right along to section eleven, adoption of the minutes. Trustees adding a motion to approve as written and order field annual regular board meeting of December the twelfth. May I get a motion?
Webster, I motion.
So do I. Second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Leve. Please take the vote. Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La Fringe. La Fringe, I. Motion passed four zero. Moving on to section twelve, the consent agenda. Um, we're gonna take items twelve point zero two through twelve point four zero. Um, does any trustee want to pull an item? I'd like to pull item twelve point zero three. For clarification. Does anyone else want to pull an item?
Yes, trustee Webster, I would like to pull twelve point eighteen and twelve point twenty. And then twelve point twenty-nine.
Anyone else? Benz, are you good down there?
Hold on, give me one sec.
Okay, take your time.
Oh, no, that's not it. No. No, I think I'm good. No. Am I good? Yes, I'm good.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda with the exception of twelve point zero three, twelve point eighteen, twelve point twenty and twelve point twenty-nine?
Benz, I mo- motion to, to uh, 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 approve the re- remain meaning consent uh, agenda items.
So do I. Second that motion.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote. Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La Fringe. La Fringe, I. Motion passed four zero. Moving on to section thirteen, items removed from the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for to approve twelve point zero three?
Uh, Benz, I mo- motion to uh, approve twelve point zero, zero three.
Webster, I second.
We're open for discussion. Mr. Kraus, can you please provide us some clarification on twelve point zero three?
Yes, Madam President, thank you for the opportunity. So one of the things that uh, we wanted to clarify is that for V M Es trip, it is for the fifth grade and not the eighth grade going to UCLA. So I do apologize about that, but on the item, it says eighth grade over to the left side and we just want to make that clarification that it's for the fifth grade uh, students going to UCLA.
Okay, thank you. With that clarification. Ms. Leve, can you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee La Fringe.
La Fringe, I.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Benz.
Ben, Benz, I.
Motion passed four zero. Moving along to um, twelve point eighteen. May I get a motion?
Webster, I motion. To approve.
So do I. Second that motion.
We're open for discussion.
I pulled this one more so just to take acknowledgement of uh, being able to bring the Freedom Riders Foundation into our um, schools at Mesa Linda and Columbia along with our HOPE students. Uh, we are very blessed to have two Freedom Riders from that foundation as teachers for our HOPE program. And I just wanted to kind of highlight how exciting this is for P D, um, our students and our parent engagement. And I want to thank Dr. Dwyzen and Mr. Kraus for facilitating and bringing in the Freedom Rider Foundation for our staff and students. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La Fringe. La Fringe, I. Motion passed four zero. Moving on to section twelve point two zero. Can I get a motion, please?
Webster, I motion. Webster, I motion to approve.
Benz, I sec- second.
We're open for discussion.
Yes, I'll additionally pull this one um, as a question to Mr. Kraus. I see a lot of these uh, agenda items and the finalization of our shade structures. And I know that uh, few of our schools have been suffering without playgrounds for quite a while. Does this mark the closure? Will our students see those playgrounds in the near future?
Thank you, trustee Webster, for your question. The Project Support Services is a in uh, facilities company that helps us close out projects. And so uh, we have finished the construction of the thirty-one shade structures. Uh, some of our playgrounds needed to wait until the shade structures were up in order to replace the um, what I call the pour and play, but it's basically the soft rubber mats at the bottom. So for instance, at Gus Franklin, uh, they have one over there that's uh, we're now able to move forward on. So you'll start seeing uh, bids approved, uh, potentially are brought to the board for approval in the future about uh, getting that done. And so our maintenance and operations department uh, is able to move forward after they close out the projects with D S A. And that's more of an administrative paperwork. So Project Support Services on this agenda item will be working with Division State Architects to sign off because D S A has to sign off on all the uh, shade structures. Once they do that, uh, then we're able to uh, proceed with the pour and play, tearing out the old and hopefully uh, repairing it. So I can bring back on June, uh, June, January thirtieth board meeting and estimated timeline on the playground, um, the pour and play for the playgrounds.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And that concludes my questions.
Any further questions? Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La Fringe. La Fringe, I. Motion passed four zero. Moving on to twelve point two nine. Can I get a motion to approve? I motion to approve.
Benz, I sec- second.
We're open for discussion.
I just had a question, um. I know that the purpose of this is to help our students with their future success in high school and college and career. My question is, why did we end up going with the independent contractor versus an employee?
This is for twelve twenty-nine, the uh, independent contractor agreement, trustee Soto?
Correct, yes.
Yes, and so Mr. Moment is a retired superintendent from Victor Valley Union High School District and currently he also was an interim uh, in our H R department. he also was an interim uh in our H R department a few years back to assist us with a lot of the uh hiring and things of that nature. And so once again, we are uh having him assist us with our search for an assistant superintendent of human resources. He was instrumental in working with us on our search for an assistant superintendent of business services as well. And so uh uh his service is invaluable. He's been in the high desert for well over thirty years and is very well known and has a lot of uh ability to facilitate uh helping us with our needs as far as like hiring people uh in the district. That's mainly what he'll be assisting us at this time until we get an assistant superintendent of human resources.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mister Kraus, can you please elaborate on why this was a ratification?
Yes, so we've had a need to uh fill our position for the assistant superintendent of uh human resources since June thirtieth uh or July first of this last year, twenty twenty-three, and we've been unsuccessful uh to do so. And so conversations were facilitated about how uh we could assist. Uh Mister Moment could all assist us not only with the assistant superintendent of business uh job search, but also with the assistant superintendent of H R job search. And we did have some viable candidates in the queue um a few weeks back, and we enlisted his help to help us uh vet them, go through the applications, uh help facilitate the interview process, and that's the same thing he would be doing for the assistant super of H R position as well.
All right, thank you.
No more comments. Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So, yes.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, no.
Trustee Turner, I'm sorry, she's not here. Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee Soto. I'm sorry, trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass three one. Moving on to section fourteen. New business, fourteen oh one. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the revised volunteer chaperone handbook.
Webster, I motion to approve the revised volunteer chaperone handbook.
So do I. Second time motion.
We're open for discussion.
I just wanna say thank you to our team for taking their time to really detail orient to this and make sure that our handbook is outlined with the procedures, protocols, that we do need to keep our students safe. So I do wanna say thank you, Dr. Doyzon, and Mister Kraus for paying extra special attention to this one. Thank you so much.
No further discussion. Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to section fourteen point zero two. Uh trustees, I need a motion to approve the Lift Enrichment LLC proposal for healthy culinary workshop for spring of twenty twenty-four.
Webster, I motion to approve.
So do I. Second.
We're open for discussion.
I'm just excited, excited for the kids to take part in this. I think it's gonna be fun. And that's all.
Thank you. I'm also excited about this. A lot of this can be done um with um hot plates or whatever it is that they use, but the exposure of the children being able to cook their veggies and some of them um um with whatever utensil. What I think that the exposure is gonna be very good for our children, and um I'm excited um as well. We also have someone that is going to be able to.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, uh members of the board. Uh Mister Alex Sanchez uh is with us this evening from Lift, just to give us a brief uh overview of some of the things that they'll be cooking or uh what they make. And so with that, uh Mister Sinatra, if you could ask uh Mister Alex Sanchez to unmute and just give a brief uh, very brief statement about kind of the uh things that they uh like to make or will be making potentially.
I'm asking them to unmute now.
Thank you.
Okay, nice to, nice to meet everybody. My name's Alex Sanchez. And I'm the program director here at Lift Enrichment, where we teach healthy culinary workshops uh to students at Title One schools. Um, it's really important for us, for students to learn how to cook healthy meals and actually take that home and engage with their families. Um, that's really what we look for in our culinary workshops. We really just want to um really just wanna impact the youth and all the kids coming out of the schools, um so that they can eat healthy for the rest of their lives. Um, the kids will learn how to do healthy quesadillas, Taco Bell crunch wraps, which will be done in a healthy manner. Um they'll learn how to do a a black bean veggie slider with cabbage slaw made with a can of black beans, things that they have at home and that are easy and readily available for the students in their day to day life. So um we're really excited to work with Adelanto, and we look forward to partnering with you and your students in the future.
Thank you very much.
Without any further discussion, um Z, you take the vote, please.
Trustee Soto.
Uh I'm gonna abstain for uh not enough information.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner, I'm sorry, trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass three zero with one. Abstain. Yes, extension, thank you. Moving on to section fourteen point zero three. Uh trustees, I need a motion to approve form of school facilities funding agreement between Adelanto Elementary School District and designated property owners and authorization for school district officers to execute and deliver the final agreement.
Benz, I mo- motion to approve.
So do I. Second.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass four zero, fourteen point zero four. Trustees, I need a motion to approve and adopt resolution number twenty-three point twenty-four point fourteen to establish community facilities district number five, replacing the undeveloped portion of existing community facilities district number one.
Benz, I mo- motion to uh approve.
So do I. Second.
We're open for discussion. Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving to section fourteen point zero five. Trustees, I need a motion to approve and adopt resolution number twenty-three point twenty-four point fifteen to incur bond and deponation.
In debt, indebtedness. I know it's a tricky, tricky one.
Endowedness.
Mm-hmm.
And in uh aggregate aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty-six million within proposed community facilities district number five of the Adelanto Elementary School District and the improvement areas thereof.
So do I. Motion that we approve.
Benz, I sec- second.
Ms. Leve, oh, we're open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Leve, would you take the vote, please?
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass five four zero. Moving on to section fourteen point zero six. Trustees, I need a motion to approve and adopt resolution number twenty-three point twenty-four point sixteen to approve and order the recording of a boundary map of proposed community facilities district number five.
Webster, I move to approve.
So do I. Second time motion.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Fourteen point zero seven. Uh trustees, I need a motion to approve and adopt resolution number twenty-three point twenty-four point seventeen to appoint consultants um relative to proceeding for establishments of community facilities district number five of the Adelanto Elementary School District.
Webster, I motion to approve.
So do I. Second.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Fourteen point zero eight. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding to increase the health clerk's work hours.
Webster, I motion to approve.
Benz, I sec- second.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass four zero, fourteen point zero nine. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding regarding custodial supervision.
Webster, I motion to approve.
So do I. Second.
We're open for discussion. Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Fourteen point ten. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding to change the job title and description from clerk three to special education clerk.
So do I. Motion that we approve.
Benz, I sec- second.
We're open for discussion. Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Fourteen point eleven. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding to reclassify the following positions. Library media coordinators from range three to range five and change the job description, language assessment clerk to bilingual language assessment clerk range seven, twelve months, and current accounting clerk be reclassified in the new payroll technician with no change to the job description.
Webster, I motion to approve.
So do I. Second.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Nay.
Trustee La French.
I. Motion pass three one. Moving on to section fourteen point twelve. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the settlement agreement with the California School Employee Association.
So do I. Motion that we approve the agreement.
Webster, I second.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to section fourteen point thirteen. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the classified executive management new hire.
Benz, I motion to uh uh approve.
Webster, I second.
We're open for a discussion.
Can we take the vo- vote first, then have discuss- discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do, yes.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Motion pass four zero. Now we're open for discussion.
I am so glad to have you on board because our poor cabinet. We have, we have two pe- people doing the job of four. And I know the position has flown and flown and flown. So I I I believe that it's all in the time, timing, and I am real really look, looking for, forward to for you to being on the cabinet, cabinet and being a part of this, this team to help our dis- district. So thank, thank, thank you for, for applying.
Congratulations. You bated to the first step, and now it's time to grow with the district. But I really wanna thank uh your experience and for your um willingness to come and work for the district. I look forward getting to know you and growing with you as well. Congratulations.
You know, when I first heard that we had a potential um applicant, I got really excited. And after meeting you tonight and having the words that we were able to, I know you are going to fit into this group and add a lot to our table. I do wanna congratulate you for your new position, and I look forward to many, many, many more board meetings with you at that end. Thank you so much for being with us tonight, and congratulations.
Okay. We would like to welcome Ms. Julie St. John Gonzalez as our new assistant superintendent of business services. Mrs. St. John Gonzalez will start February the first, twenty twenty-four, and terms of her agreement are as followed. Step one of the assistant superintendent salary schedule, paid health and welfare benefits to the district management cap unless opted out. One thousand annually to purchase a life insurance policy, car allowance stipend of four hundred and seventy-five dollars per month, cell phone stipend of one hundred per month, T S A contributions of eight percent annually. Terms of the contract will be from February the first, twenty twenty-four until June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Anyone who wishes to see the full contract can contact our human resources department. Welcome, um Ms. St. John Gonzalez. Welcome aboard. We appreciate and thank you being here. We look forward to seeing what's going to be our outcome. We're very happy to have you. Thank you. Okay, moving along to does anyone else wanna say anything? You guys good?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We are excited uh to have Julie join our team, and we're looking forward to her coming on board February first. And I know that uh Dr. Doyz- Dr. Dwyson is also excited. I'll let her say a few comments, but we're very impressed with her and her abilities and we know that she will be a great asset to our team. And with that, again, congratulations, Julie. Dr. Dwyson.
I just want to say welcome to the team. Excited to have another member and I don't have to be by myself down here. But we are, we are truly excited to have you and I look forward to our time together to do great things for our district.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along to section fourteen point fourteen. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the superintendent contract extension from July the first, twenty twenty four until June the thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Benz, I mo- mo- motion to approve.
So do I second time motion.
We're open for discussion.
I just want, want to share, trustee La French, do you remember remember a few year, years ago when we were in this position, this position and we made a lot of people, they are very angry at us.
Yeah, I do remember because I'm sensitive, I do.
Yes. So I, I wholeheartedly support this. I believe Doc, Doc, Mr. Kraus has been a good soup superintendent for our dis- dis- district. He shows his passion, passion through for our kids and our staff as trying to be re- re- responsible. He looks, looks ahead at how things are and how things can be. And he truly wants what's best for our dis- district. I see him, you know, when he, he interacts, he, he always has a, a pos- positive out, outlook. If, if he was a girl, it'd be like what, a Pollyanna, right? The ones that sees it all great. But I, but I have found him to be a breath of fresh fresh air and, and I loo- look for, forward to work, working with, with him for as long as I can here on the board, so. I'm done.
I too concur with trustee Benz. I've already said my part of Mr. Cross's work ethic, his dedication to the district and the students. And I really am looking forward to get to know Mr. Cross more, his team, and how we can work to better improve the quality of education within the district. Thank you.
Your, your mic.
I want to say that I know that you will continue to move our district forward. We appreciate you. This is my second year working side by side with you as board president, and I want to thank you for all that I have learned and your ability to not only run the district, but you know, give training to us and teach us. And you know, I know sometimes it appears that we do some joking up here, which we, we have to sometimes in order to be able to bring some laughter sometimes when it starts to get late. I appreciate your, your help with me and you know, the long hours that we spend setting the agenda. And I know that you have jumped in wholeheartedly. And when I see you at school visits and things of that nature, I know sometimes I may not tell you, but you know, I appreciate you, I do. I appreciate seeing you throw the football. We try to throw it really, right? But I appreciate when they come up to you. Everything would jump the rope, right? I wanted to do double dutch that day. You wouldn't do it. But anything else, you know, when the kids asked or they say something, you know, you'd be the first person over there to help them out and I, I'm glad that we have this time. I'm glad our district has you. All right, we don't want to run out of time.
Ms. Leve, without any more discussion, you take the vote, please.
Trustee Soto.
So do yes.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I motion pass four zero. Fourteen point fifteen.Trustees, I need a motion to approve the Assistant Superintenders of Academic Services Contract extension from July the first, twenty twenty four until June the thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Webster, I motion to approve.
So do I second.
We're open for discussion.
Dr. Dwyson, you have come on here and take, taken on so much more than what's in your job description. I have, not here, but in the past, heard Adam say, that's not my job. And you take it on ev- everything that, that's been thrown. You have take taken it on with grace. I mean, so calm, not freaking out. I know I would be, but I want to thank, thank you. And again, I, I look for, forward to continue continuing to work with you. I have so much conf- confidence in you and I am so great grateful of your dead dedication to our dis- district. So thank, thank you very, very much.
You know, having to approve these contracts and, and saying our thanks to Michael, Mr. Michael Cross and Dr. Dwyson, it's very difficult because I have a lot to say. But essentially, I too agree with trustee Benz. You know, the district has two miss, well, now we have our CBO, but you, we've, you've been wearing multiple hats and it's it's important that we recognize that because it's not easy. So I just want to thank you for your work, dedication to the district, having to wear multiple hats and still staying very stoic all the time. It's very welcoming in our district, so. Thank you.
Tasha, I remember when you first come, came aboard and a lot has changed since you have been here. And it's been a blessing to have you here and to have your that, the tone that you have that stays, you know, just as quiet and, you know, and uplifting at the same time. I greatly appreciate your dedication to our students and to our families. And I thank you for for answering, you know, my billion question when it comes to TK. Everyone knows that my specialty is in zero to five. I'm a head start, you know, that's what I do. And I'm always advocating not just for all our students, but you know, the little ones, making sure that they are not forgotten inside of a district. I appreciate your teaching. I, I, I appreciate you, you know, teaching me on how the district run things when it comes to curriculum and how important it is. But I thank you for staying with us in the trenches when it's just these two little seats over here, right? We greatly appreciate all that you do for curriculum. It is so nice to go out and hear teachers and principals, you know, talk about your dedication. You know, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Leve, can you take that vote, please?
Trustee Soto.
So do yes.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I motion pass four zero. On section fifteen, policy introductions, updates and readings, fifteen point zero one. Trustees, I need a motion to approve and adopt the second read of Board Policy thirty four seventy for debt, debt management.
Benz, I mo- motion to approve. Webster, I second.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I motion pass four zero. Section sixteen, governing board members' reports and announcements, sixteen oh one.
Madam President, it is nine twenty five.
We finished by nine thirty or two.
Nine thirty.
Okay. I tried to go fast.
You do a minute, a minute each.
You can have mine.
Okay.
And mine, mine too.
Did I just deliver?
Yes.
Yeah. All right.
Here we go.
Good evening, A E S D friends and family. I want to start off by saying it's great to be back in the new year, refreshed and ready to head on our upcoming agendas. Tonight, I would like to spend some, or send some appreciation out to ADTA for providing Christmas presents to me and the board. Also, a big thank you to Ms. Lawhead over at George as well as she provided us presents as well. Showing that kind of spirit is how we continue to cultivate the creative kindness and I thank those mentioned for leading the way. We had many different holiday celebrations throughout our school district since our last board meeting, and I want to thank all of our staff, our volunteers and families for spicing this year up, for making it one of the most engaged years since the pandemic. Secondly, I see a lot of creative field trips once again on our agenda tonight. A shout out to Ted Vic for some creativity in your destinations. Thank, one thing that fascinates me about education is that we focus on scores and data so much that I think sometimes we forget about the doors and pathways we open for our students by exposing them to different environments. So thank you again to all for making sure our students are getting our, getting something and having that social and educational time with their peers, typo. Additionally, I want to express how excited I am to see the Freedom Riders coming to our district to work with our schools. Per, I personally have had, I have a lot of respect for this organization, learning a lot from our two, from two of our very own Freedom Riders, the backbone of our district's Hope Program. And I look forward to seeing the great things we learn and share with our community. Lastly, I want to go on to congratulate our district leaders. I would like to welcome our newest addition, Ms. Julie Gonzalez. I look forward to working with you as A E S D's newest CBO. A big thank you to Dr. Dwyson. You have transformed academic services, supported additional departments, and always had a can do attitude. You truly are a blessing to our district and I am so happy you will continue being part of our team. Mr. Kraus, you took leadership during very unsettling waters and navigated us through situations that most superintendents are never tasked with. I want to say that your continued leadership marks two very important things. One, that we have leadership truly committed to our staff and students. And two, that the contract renewal signifies our commitment to the longevity and success of our district moving forward. I want to congratulate those who joined the board meeting tonight on their amazing science projects, and I want to encourage all to continue on. I hope everyone has a very wonderful night and drive safe. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate trustee Webster.
Thank you. Moving on to section seventeen, adjournment, seventeen oh one. Trustees, I need a motion to adjourn.
A motion that we adjourn.
And Ben, Ben sec- seconds. Ms. Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I motion pass four zero. Time is nile, nine twenty nine. We did it. Thank you. Everyone, please drive safe home.